It's four fifty-nine, but I want to get started right on time just because we've got a lot to cover.
Yeah, for sure.
And we'll just get going. Okay, when the iPad says... And I have to stop saying my iPad freezes. It's really the program.
It's really legislative. Yeah, I legislate.
It sends poor Demetrius into a tailspin and then IT's calling me the next day, can we make an appointment? Oh, I misspoke. Okay, it is five o'clock. All right, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City Council meeting for the city of Alameda. Today is Tuesday, May twentieth, twenty twenty-five, and we are about to go into closed session. But before we start, I'm going to ask City Clerk Laura Weisiger to please call the roll.
Councilmembers Bowler.
Here.
Dayson.
Here.
Hopefully Councilmember Jensen will be here shortly. Pryor.
Here.
Mayor Asay Ashcroft.
Here.
Four present.
We have a quorum.
Yes.
And Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment on closed session items?
I was just meaning to check that, and I... We do not.
All right, so at this point, we are going to, we're about to adjourn to closed session to consider two matters. And Madam Clerk, would you introduce those items for us, please?
Three A is Conferences with Rural Property Negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five six point eight. The property is Building five thirty at three ninety West Oriskone Avenue. The area is bounded by West Pacific Avenue, Orion Street, and Viking Street, West Tyconderoga Avenue, and Central Avenue. The city negotiators are the city manager, base reuse and economic development director, base reuse manager, and assistant city attorney. The negotiating parties are the city of Alameda, Pacific Fusion Corporation, and Heinz Interest Limited Partnership. Under negotiation are price and terms of sale. Three B is Conferences with Labor Negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five seven point six. The city negotiators are the city manager, acting human resources director, general manager of Alameda Municipal Power, and a deputy city attorney. The employee organizations are Alameda City Employees Association, Alameda Police Management Association, Alameda Police Officers Association, non sworn, Alameda Police Officers Association, I always do that outside of order, Electric Utility Professionals Association, International Brotherhood of Electric Workers, and Management and Confidential Employees Association. Under negotiation are salaries, employee benefits, and terms of employment.
That's why we started at five on the dot, so we didn't have a few. All right, so with that, it is our every intention to be back before the public at seven o'clock. And we're going to adjourn now into room three ninety-one, and could I have everyone involved in three A come on back with us? Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Ready in the balcony? Thumbs up? Two thumbs up? All right, we're definitely ready. All right.
I like that.
When the balcony is ready, we're all ready. All right, well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City Council meeting for the city of Alameda. Tonight is Tuesday, May twentieth, twenty twenty-five, and the City Council has just returned from closed session where we heard a couple of items. And I am going to ask our City Clerk Laura Weisiger to please report any action taken in closed session.
So the first item was Conferences with Rural Property Negotiators for a property out in Alameda Point. And staff provided information and council provided direction with no vote taken. And then the next item was Conferences with Labor Negotiators, and the staff provided information and council provided direction by two votes. The first vote was five ayes, and the second vote was four one with Councilmember Dayson voting no.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and with that, I will adjourn the special closed session meeting. And I will call to order the special joint meeting of the City Council and the Successor Agency to the Community Improvement Commission, which also used to be known as redevelopment. And we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'd like to ask my colleague, Councilmember Tracy Jensen, to please lead us in the pledge.
Please rise. Begin the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and have a wonderful Memorial Day, everyone.
Thank you, Councilmember Jensen. Council communications come a little later, but you can say more. And so then we are going to go on to the, oh, to the roll call. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Councilmembers Bowler.
Here.
Dayson.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Pryor.
Here.
Mayor Asay Ashcroft.
Here.
Five present.
I almost said I. Anyway, then, next we go to the consent calendar. This is just the consent calendar for the City Council and Successor Agency meeting. And so do we have any, do we have any public comment on that consent calendar, Madam Clerk?
We do not.
Okay, so then, if there's no comments or questions from the council, I'm just looking for a motion to approve the consent calendar for the City Council and the Successor Agency.
They'll move.
Moved by Councilmember Toni Dayson, seconded by... Guys, it'll be a long evening if we don't move this along. Who, was that you, Councilwoman Jensen? Councilwoman Jensen seconded. Okay. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, that motion passes. Thank you. I will adjourn that special Successor Agency meeting. And I'll call to order the regular City Council meeting. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Roll call has been notified present.
Thank you. Do we have any agenda changes this evening?
We do not.
All right, and we don't have any proclamations this evening. We did two last time. So we will move on to oral communications on non-agenda items. And this is when speakers may address the council in regard to any matter that is not on the agenda, over which the council has jurisdiction. We'll take fifteen minutes at the top of the agenda now, and these all have to be in-person comments. And then the, if we run out of time, there's another opportunity for oral communication, non-agenda items, at the end of the regular agenda. Madam Clerk, do we have oral communication speakers?
We do, and we have three, so look at three minutes each. The first is Brian Kennedy.
Welcome, Speaker Kennedy.
Good evening. It's up. It's still up. What I'm talking about is this garbage on our website, anti ICE stuff, immigrants know your rights, what to do if you see ICE activity. Starters, the premise is a lie. ICE doesn't go after lawful immigrants. It goes after criminal illegal aliens. Ninety percent, ninety percent of the illegals arrested by ICE have criminal records. Did you know that? Let's review what ICE does. They're the number one federal agency that combats child sex trafficking that's run by the cartels across the southern border. They combat that. That's a heroic thing. Under, again, the failed Biden-Harris administration, in addition to the twelve million illegal aliens that they purposely sent over the border, everybody knows they wanted to get them on the voting rolls. That's another situation. Among those were three hundred thousand little kids, sent by the cartels into the U.S., unaccompanied minors that went missing. No one knows where they are. President Trump has tasked ICE with finding and rescuing those little kids from whatever hellhole they're in. And in four months' time, you know how many ICE has rescued so far? Five thousand. Now, is that partisan? That's not partisan. That's not Republican or Democrat. That's a heroic thing. ICE agents are heroes. So my question to you is, why are we making ICE's job tougher with this garbage? If ICE is in town, do this, do that. And why are you giving instructions not to lawful immigrants, but to criminal illegal aliens with our tax dollars? That's a shame. The little girl on the screen, do you know who that is? That was Jocelyn Nungary, a twelve-year-old child, Houston, Texas. Guess what happened to her? She was brutally gang raped and murdered by two illegal aliens, Maryland, that came across our border courtesy of the Biden-Harris administration. Catch and release. They knew they were illegals. They let them go. ICE was not allowed to do their job. They lured her to a seven eleven at night, took her to a bridge, got her under the bridge, and they gang raped and murdered her. Hey, Michelle, Tracy, you know how long they gang raped her for? Two hours. A twelve-year-old child. They gang raped her again and again and again while she screamed for her life. She screamed to God, and all because ICE wasn't able to do their job. And you've got this crap up here. By the way, Houston is a sanctuary city for illegal aliens. Aren't you proud to be part of a sanctuary city? So my question is to you, do you have any shred of decency, any of you? And two of you I like, but sometimes you make it tough. Any sense of decency that you would inhibit ICE, a little girl, a twelve-year-old child, gang raped for two hours by illegal aliens that Maryland likes to let in through sanctuary cities? That's outrageous. You guys ought to be ashamed yourself for letting this garbage up. Take this crap off our website. Madam Clerk, though, please leave up the picture so these jokers can admire their handiwork.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
Leslie Schubin.
Welcome, Speaker Schubin.
Hello.
And you know what? You can bring that microphone down to wherever you need it. There you go.
I am a landlady, and I've been a resident of Alameda for twenty-eight years. I have a wonderful home on Clinton Avenue that's on the historic register. And I'm having a big issue with Bill Chapin. And I wrote to you, Ms. Ashcroft, and also to Jennifer Ott. I haven't heard back anything, but I'll try to summarize this briefly. And if you don't mind, I'm going to read from the note that I sent to you. So at issue is the continued harassment I have had from Bill Chapin since May twenty twenty-three. Right now, the main issue is after approving a rent increase in November twenty twenty-three, which was the first since two thousand nineteen for one of my tenants. Eight months later, Mr. Chapin ordered me to return all the accumulated rent increase back to my tenants that they had been diligently paying without any issue, no complaints. Mr. Chapin cited a new law passed in April twenty twenty-four. Mr. Chapin broke both federal and state law by applying a twenty twenty-four law to an event that occurred in twenty twenty-three. I have a lot of documentation here that I'm not going to go through. I was hoping that somebody in the city attorney's office would inform Mr. Chapin that he wrongly reduced my rent illegally by applying a law retroactively. It's not allowed. So at this point, he's trying to, he's given me citations for two thousand dollars for the simple act of writing a polite note to my tenants asking them to honor the initial rent increase that had been approved in November twenty-third. I asked them politely to refund me the money. I had to refund them. They did not. And Mr. Chapin accuses me of giving a second rent increase within twelve months. That was not a rent increase. And I outlined for him what the rent increase would be.
Thank you, and your time is up. Thank you.
May I leave the paper?
You can leave it with the city clerk's representative here at the desk. Thank you so much. And our next speaker?
William Morrison.
Welcome, Speaker Morrison.
Thank you for the time. I appreciate this. Very quickly, a question I'd like to ask is, how do you correct mistakes? And the reason why I ask this in this manner is because of the issue I have been addressing and made aware of, which is the High Street-Fernside-Gibbons Drive intersection and various things associated with the Fernside calming activities and bike advancement. I've had to go back and look at various things like the general plan that was adopted in November of twenty, what is it, twenty-three? As far as that goes. And basically, what it comes down to is I'm looking at various things that I find in there associated with the mobility element, which surprised me. On page eighty-eight of that, of that plan, there's a statement about traffic lane width, which is basically that to reduce speeding and to limit, to reduce speeding limits of all streets to ten feet or less. And if there is a read, any reason to maintain this and do not change it. Effectively, item number H talks about roadway widening, which is prohibit the widening of existing roadways to create additional automobile traffic lanes to accommodate increased automobile traffic volumes. Now, I find that somewhat interesting. I'm kind of the opinion that when you make a mistake or when you have a problem, you go back and correct it. You don't codify a situation where you can just say, no, we're not going to do that because we have it in our plan right now. I would like to state that this last Sunday, the efforts to, shall we say, make things a little bit more difficult for automobiles, I saw all the way across Alameda. Everywhere I went, the streets at this time were backed up to at least two or three cycles on the, on the various lanes. And I would say that from the viewpoint of attempting to make things a little bit more difficult for people to use automobiles to get around Alameda, somebody's doing a very good job. All right. The only other thing I'd like to say is there was a little statement back here about maintaining the, the character and of Alameda neighborhoods. And I would like to say that Gibbons Drive is a, a character that sets up a neighborhood, the Fernside area of Alameda. And to change that, not maintain it and have it act usefully, I think is a mistake there, which you, as time goes on, you can correct. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And our next speaker?
That was our last speaker.
Okay, with that, we will close oral communication, non-agenda items, and we'll move on to the consent calendar. These are routine items that are approved by one motion unless council members want to remove items for discussion. Any removed items will be heard after we hear our, well, single, single, regular agenda item this evening. And council members may speak for up to three minutes on the consent calendar. So first, are there any council member, are there any consent calendar items any council member wants to pull? Seeing no hands. Does council have any questions, any clarifying questions about any of the consent calendar items? Seeing no hands. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers on the consent calendar?
We do not.
We are closed. Public comment on the consent calendar, and we'll go back to the Public comment on the consent calendar, and we'll go back to the council for comments or a motion? Both?
Motion to the consent calendar.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember Greg Bowler to approve the consent calendar, seconded by Vice Mayor Michelle Prior. Any further discussion or any discussion? Seeing, hearing none. Madam, oh, we don't need a roll call vote. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? All right, that passes unanimously. All right, we're moving along. So then we come to our single regular agenda item. And Madam Clerk, would you, while the appropriate members of staff are coming forward, would you please introduce item 7A for us?
Absolutely. Recommendation to receive an informational report on the status of City of Alameda vacancies and recruitment and retention efforts as mandated by Assembly Bill 2561.
All right. And so come on up and introduce yourself, if you would, please.
Yes. Here we go. Hi, good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. My name is Noel White, Acting Human Resources Director for the City of Alameda. And tonight, I will be presenting on the status of the City of Alameda vacancies, recruitment, and retention efforts as required by Assembly Bill 2561. So AB 2561 was signed into law and made effective as of January 1st of 2025. It requires all public agencies to present information about the status of vacancies, recruitment, and retention efforts, as well as identify any changes to policies, procedures, and recruitment activities that may lead to obstacles in the hiring process. As well as part of AB 265051, excuse me, it entitles recognized employee units to make a presentation during the same public hearing. And if a individual represented bargaining unit has a vacancy threshold of 20% or greater, they may request additional information be presented. We did reach out to our represented units and did have one respond. Sergeant Horikoshi, Union President of the Alameda Police Officers Association, will be presenting later tonight as part of this presentation on behalf of APOA. As well, APOA was the only unit that did meet that 20% threshold, and so the request was made for additional information and will be part of this presentation as well. So a snapshot of our workforce for the calendar year of 2024, we started with 595 total budgeted authorized full-time positions and ended at 601. These positions cover a wide variety of services and support to the city, as you can see by our various departments. This is information on our citywide vacancy information over a 12-month span. So it's important to note that vacancies or vacant positions happen for a variety of reasons. It could be through newly created positions, it could be through retirements, it could be through promotions and separations, so it's important to keep that in mind. So over a 12-month span, our average vacancies at the end of each month was 10.3%. And to give you a little perspective on what's considered normal or healthy, for lack of a better word, is a vacancy rate between 10% to 15%, 15 being on the high side. And that's also a normal, healthy number for attrition rates or separation rates, which we'll talk about later in this presentation. So again, we have an average vacancy rate of 10.3%. It is interesting to note, or maybe just something to consider, that if we were to remove APOA from those numbers, our vacancy rate would be 7.7%. Looking at our individual bargaining units, as I previously stated, APOA did meet that 20% threshold for the calendar year of 2024. They were at 24.4%, followed by the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, IBEW, and Electrical Utility Professionals of Alameda, UPa. I do want to note for both of those units, IBEW and UPa, they do contain positions that are allocated to position control but are not funded. So unfortunately, they act against our vacancy rates. However, we are unable to fill them until the positions are funded. So these are our nine represented labor groups, and then we have our four unrepresented labor groups. I do want to point out that Alameda Municipal Unrepresented Employees, or AMPU, is a unit of four positions. So when we have a vacancy, even if it's for a couple of months, it's a larger impact, which we did, and we had a staff member that was acting in the role that was eventually promoted into the full-time position. So our recruitment process, Human Resources is keenly aware of the impact that vacancies have on an organization, not just increased workload and burnout, but impact to continuation of services to our citizens. So we are governed by a civil service process, which requires us to engage in a competitive recruitment process based on the knowledge, skills, and abilities of the position and to seek the most highly qualified candidate. So the image that you see in front of you is the full recruitment lifecycle, starting with our vacancy, right? Our separated employer, perhaps they're promoted, retired, and the requisition is approved, which the requisition communicates to us in Human Resources what the position is and to start that recruitment. We go through the competitive process, which can include a variety of different steps, including written exams, interviews, practicals, depending on the position, the classification, all the way to the very end where we hire our beautiful, wonderful new staff member. We orientate them and bring them onboard. Okay, so some recruitment information for 2024. We were particularly busy. We did fill 122 positions throughout the 2024 calendar year. And our requisitioned eligible list, average number of calendar days was 84, so a touch under three months. I do want to highlight that because according to our applicant tracking system, our ATS for short, we are 35 days faster than our comparable agencies when making a hire. So not only are we performing effective recruitments, we are also acting efficiently as well. We had a variety of number of vacancies filled in a couple of different ways. I do want to highlight the new recruitments opened at 46. It's about an average of six recruitments a month, just to give you a perspective of what the Human Resources staff is performing. And then our existing eligible list does include continuous recruitments for our police recruits, laterals, and graduates. Okay, so part of our constant review when we look at our recruitments is identifying any sort of obstacles within the hiring process, and Human Resources does actively look at that on a continuous basis. We have made several improvements to keep our process lean and efficient. One, an example of that is that we implemented a secure online testing forum, which allows, it opens accessibility. It allows our candidates to test from pretty much anywhere, as long as they have an internet connection, within a very specific timeframe. I've spoken before to council about our project on updating class specs, our specifications. A recruitment really starts with our class specs, our class specifications. If we have a spec that's out of date, it doesn't reflect the key functions or knowledge, skills, or ability, it can really impact the recruitment. So that is part of the effort as well. Other examples that we've moved towards to eliminate any sort of obstacles is using external raiders for our internal boards, for our internal interview boards, their SMEs, their subject matter experts in the field. And so by bringing them in, it helps to provide that outside's perspective. And we've also eliminated providing our raiders with applicant materials to minimize or completely eliminate any implicit or covert bias. So those are some of the options, or some of the things that we've been doing over the last year to improve and identify where we can make our recruitment, our hiring process more accessible. So we have a lot of emphasis on vacancies and hiring, but retention is just as important. And I can speak from personal experience that when I speak with colleagues outside of the city, when I speak with potential candidates, they absolutely love that four-day work week. Just speaking with, internally within staff as well, that is something that does keep them with our city in conjunction with our telecommute policy. So during 2024, we had 98 vacancies created through a variety of different means. Internally, that looks like 19 promotions, we had two internal transfers, we did have some additional positions added during the 2024 calendar year. Looking at attrition specifically, so we had quite a few retirements in 2024, '23. We also had quite a few separations that were voluntary, 42. And again, they happen for a variety of reasons. It could be an additional opportunity, it could be proximity to home, personal reasons. I know I sat with one employee that actually was looking at a compensation reduction because their family needs needed somebody at home and to work fully remote. So a variety of reasons. We're still within that healthy range at 12.3%. Again, looking at APOA, if we were to remove that from our turnover rate, it drops it to about 9.9%. Moving on to APOA and their request for additional information. So to provide a little bit of insight to the process, HR and, we're very, very, very fortunate to have a very collaborative relationship with APD. We work very hard with them. We conduct bimonthly oral boards, interviewing anywhere between 10 to 12 candidates. We have worked with APD, excuse me, to do full-day assessment centers, which includes the PELlet B exam, which is the post-entry law enforcement test battery, which is a requirement of post, it's a basic educational exam, doing a physical assessment test, as well as an interview, all in the same day at no cost to candidates. I know that APD is very involved with the recruitment process, often traveling hundreds...
So you are, Ms. White, you are out of time, but we want you to finish this important item. How many more minutes would you say you need?
I'll say that I'm wrapped up. I'd rather cede the floor to Sergeant Horikoshi to complete...
Well, we don't cede the floor because you're staff and you have your own 10 minutes. If you would like a few more minutes to wrap up, you could have that. I just need to do a quick vote.
Absolutely.
Three minutes enough? You want five? Three is good. Okay, council, what I need is a motion and a second to add three minutes to Ms. White's time. That's a motion made by Councilmember Daysock, seconded by Councilmember Bowler. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Please continue.
Wonderful, thank you so much. Being mindful of the time, I will point out the average calendar days to hire, which is about 147, which is about four months, which is completing the entire process from the application submission all the way through backgrounds to a contingent offer of employment. When looking at opportunities for improvement in compensation and working conditions, the theme very much is retention and making sure that we're remaining competitive within the market. Labor negotiations is a vehicle to make those, to address some of those issues. I can't speak conclusively to labor negotiations as we are actively negotiating with APOA, but I can say that the theme has been retention and addressing those specific issues. Thank you. And before we get to the Q and A, Sergeant Horikoshi will be presenting.
Actually, I'm running the meeting.
Oh, sorry.
This is the way we'll do it. Counsel, do we have any clarifying questions from Ms. White's presentation? If we don't, we'll go on to our public speaker, which I believe is Sergeant, Sergeant Horikoshi? Is that correct? Welcome.
Thank you. All right. Good evening, Madam Mayor, elected officials, and other city officials. My name is Kevin Horikoshi, and I'm the president of the Alameda Police Officers Association. I represent the sworn officers and sergeants of the Police Department. As you heard from Acting Human Resource Director White, the Police Department has, there's a staffing problem within my membership. I appreciate the comments made by Councilmember Daysock last week during the budget workshop regarding the 88 budgeted positions at the Police Department. I know different numbers have been thrown out when it comes to staffing, so I want to present this chart to show you what those numbers look like and really mean. So what I have on the chart here on the left side is if we were fully staffed with 88 officers, that would be three captains, eight lieutenants, 12 sergeants, and 65 officers. On the right side of the chart is what we're currently staffed at as of May 5th. That would be three captains, which is fully staffed, eight lieutenants, which is again fully staffed, 12 sergeants, fully staffed, and 46 officers, which leaves us with 19 vacancies and a total of 69 officers. What I wanted to look at next is breaking down the 46 officers that we have currently and where they are assigned. Thirty-seven of those officers are currently assigned to patrol. Their main duties are to respond to calls for service, take initial police reports, and conduct traffic enforcement and whatever other tasks come up through the days. Currently, we have zero officers in our Traffic or Motors Division. Their primary function is to enforce traffic laws and investigate traffic collisions. We have one officer in our Community Resource Unit, one officer assigned to the Bureau of Support Services, and five officers in the Field Training Program. Being understaffed is not a problem that is unique to us here in Alameda. However, this is a problem that greatly impacts the officer rank and is a two-pronged problem. There is a lot of time, effort, resources, and money needed to hire people, as Acting Human Resource Director White had suggested. But at the same time, you also have to be the right fit to retain these officers. I'm going to first touch on hiring. I think we're doing a good job hiring people. As previously stated, outline the process of how that's working, steps we're looking at to improve that process, and I can also appreciate the efforts made by the city to include the $75,000 hiring bonus.
Oh, next one?
Sorry.
It probably won't go with it. You can just click.
Okay. So getting to hiring, from June of 2021 to May 5th of 2025, we've hired 48 new officers. Of those 48 officers, 22 of them received the $75,000 hiring bonus. I'm going to get into the retention. But here's a problem that I see. Retaining the officers, retaining the officers we have has had a major impact on our staffing. During that same timeframe of June 2021 to May 5th of 2025, we've also lost 48 officers. We've also lost five recruits in the academy that aren't factored into that 48. Here's a breakdown of where those 48 people went. 16 of those officers have left our department to go to a different police department. 10 of those officers have retired due to service retirements. 11 of those officers have had disability retirements. Six officers were released from the department for various reasons, and five other officers have just left the profession altogether. If you do not include those who have retired or those who are physically unable to continue working, we have lost 59% of our staff to a different police agency. Of the 16 that left, over half of those people, we paid for their academy time, putting them through the academy, and all of these 16 that left, we have put time and effort in the Field Training Program. The first question you probably have is the same question I have. Why do these people leave? I think the answers will vary, but ultimately, it was because for some reason or another, they were not happy here. It is my belief people typically go to a different police department for some of these reasons, and I'm putting them in no particular order. Wages and benefits is a factor, career growth and development is a factor, working closer to home or to family, day-to-day work restrictions, and/or not agreeing with policies and procedures and workloads, and I'll go into each one of these now. As previously stated, I know we're in contract negotiations on that, getting fine details of wages and benefits, but kind of broadly. I understand there will always be other cities that make more money than us, but staying competitive with those other cities is important. Of the 16 officers who left, some of them told me they were leaving for more money. And in the research that I did to the agencies that those officers went to, I saw that they were making more money in their new agencies. Even though there are other benefits built into contracts, actual salary is the most talked-about topic when people are talking about leaving or ultimately decide to leave. All cities are unique in what they offer in benefits, and I think it's important for us to be creative. For example, we lost two officers to a city that offers take-home vehicles for all sworn employees. I understand this is a big cost and probably would never happen here, but this is just an example of something that a different city is providing. I think that it's important for me as the president and the city to see what different types of benefits are being offered out there when it comes to contracts. All right, talk about career growth and development. As previously shown with our staffing levels, officers here have limited ability for career growth and development. Officers have few opportunities to work anything other than patrol, which won't broaden their skill set. Patrol is important and will always be the backbone of a police department. However, most people want to work a different assignment at some points, at some point in their career. Services within the Police Department suffer from lower staffing levels. I know that Councilmember Jensen and others of you have brought up and discussed the desire for increased traffic enforcement throughout the city. With zero officers in our Traffic Division, we have to rely on our patrol officers to conduct these enforcement stops. Although it is part of patrol officers' duties, they must also handle calls for service, conduct business checks, complete police reports, and whatever else, whatever other tasks they may be given in a day. I'm sure there have been times when you have wondered what the status of one of our significant incident reports is, or had a community member tell you about a crime... incident reports is, or had a community member tell you about a crime and wondered what the status of that case was. We currently have two detectives in our investigations bureau and following up on all criminal cases that are, that the patrol officers take as their responsibility. They each carry a caseload of a couple hundred cases. This gives them little time to give each of these cases the appropriate time and attention they deserve. They are often having to prioritize cases based on the severity of the crime. Both of these units are affected by our staffing numbers. Being understaffed not only offers few opportunities, but it also causes the officers in those positions to have to do the work of two or three people. Working closer to home or family. It is my belief that this is the answer that we often get when people don't want to tell us the real answer. I think that it is a factor in their decision to leave, but I don't think it's usually the biggest factor. Touching next on the day-to-day work restrictions and we're not agreeing with policies, procedures, and the workload. I think you, I think you are always going to have people who do not agree with work restrictions, policies, and procedures, and who will think the workload is too little or too much. This is difficult to change or fix because everybody will always have their own opinions on these topics. I will close by saying thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak in front of you on this important and complex topic. I hope that you see there is no simple solution. However, the impact of this problem greatly affects the day-to-day operations of the police department, the wellness and morale of the employees and the community. Thank you.
Thank you. And just for clarification, and I'm looking at the city clerk and the city attorney, can the council ask questions of our speaker?
Madam Mayor, yes, the council can ask questions of the speaker.
All right. Does anyone have any questions that they would like to ask? Councilmember Jensen, and then Councilmember Bowler, was that you, or just leaning forward? I gotta quit reading all this body language. Councilmember Jensen, back to you.
Thank you. Thank you for the report from staff as well as from Sergeant Horikoshi. I wanted to ask, with regard to the discussion, the numbers that you provided regarding the patrol versus field training, community resource investigation, and support services. When there's recruitment, are the officers recruited to come, or is an officer recruited to come in as a patrol officer, or as a community resource officer, or as an investigator?
So typically, how that works is if you're just talking about like the academy graduate or whatnot, the brand-new employee, they will go right to patrol. After they've spent some time on patrol and gotten the experience of being a police officer, they can apply to be in the different positions such as traffic investigations, community resource officer, but nobody will, no brand-new employee will go from academy to one of these specialized assignments.
Then a lateral employee might come in at one of those assignments? Is that possible?
As the president, I would argue no, because I don't think it's fair, but it's also uncharted territory. We haven't had a lateral who tried to immediately go to a specialized assignment.
Let me just jump in and ask you to amplify why don't you think it's fair? Because they're jumping the queue, or?
Sure, yeah. I don't think it's fair because, you know, yes, they have experience in a different agency, or they have law enforcement experience, but we have, or I have plenty of members who've put time, you know, blood, sweat, and tears into working here, given their time to the city, and I feel as though that person should get first crack at it, so to speak.
Thank you. And so the lack of staff in these positions in the traffic, especially in traffic, but also in community resource and support services, that's because of the attrition that you mentioned earlier?
Yes. You know, 37 officers on patrol, again, that being the backbone, that's the first place where we're going to try to completely fill. The dispersal of that is not really my shop. That would be Captain Kubiyama, who's representing the chief tonight. That's more of an operations thing. But yes, ultimately, any lack of staffing affects the specialized assignments.
And so my last question about this then, those, the patrol decisions about, and I can hear from Captain Kubiyama as well, but the decisions about whether there would be a full, there would be, as you say, however many, 44 patrol officers, and then the other limited zero, traffic five, field training one, community resource two, investigation one, support services. Those are decisions about allocation of existing staff that are made by command?
Correct.
Okay.
Management decisions by the chief and whatnot, like the number of whatever fully-staffed patrol is, that's his or their decision, and then the extra bodies going wherever, that's their decision.
Then, I'm sorry, then one more question, then would the patrol that isn't assigned in those, to those divisions, would they fill if there's no one there? Would that, as you mentioned earlier, especially with regard to traffic, but with the other positions as well, with community resources and support services, would there be a assignment or acting patrol officer in those positions?
So, are you comfortable with the answer, Ms. White? So what we have done because of obviously lack of staffing is we have opened up overtime positions for traffic enforcement, for assisting and kind of learning the investigations role. But, you know, that's a, it's a Band-Aid for a bigger problem. Yes, in the traffic enforcement, that helps because they're out there writing citations for traffic-related issues. In the investigations portion, it's, it helps, but you know, you don't learn a whole lot in a 10-hour over shift day. Now, you may be able to help us out with an operation or something like that, but long-term, it's, it's, it's just they're assisting the people that are there, basically.
Thank you, Sergeant.
Vice Mayor Pryor.
You had mentioned this, I was wondering if you can speak to it. I wanted to ask about burnout, how it affects the quality of work, the effect on public safety, and also an officer's ability to take vacation or needed breaks, how these things are.
I think there's kind of three questions in there, I'll try and answer them all. Burnout, I mean, I think we all experience burnout. Like I said, at all ranks, regardless if you're fully-staffed on patrol, or you have two detectives and you should have doubled that. I think especially, yes, in the investigations role. In my current position, I work closely with them, and I see the amount of cases that they get. I see the stress that they have when some other significant incident comes up, and now they've got to drop what they're doing to take this on because it's more, I won't say more important, but more severe, more severe of a crime. So yeah, I mean, there is, I mean, I would like to say we're still producing really good work and trying to keep the community safe, but at some point, yeah, there's obvious burnout. I forgot the middle question, so I'll jump to the vacation one. As far as the vacation goes, because patrol is fully-staffed, it's not that hard, I don't want to say that, it's not that difficult to get time off. As before, when we were greatly understaffed, and we had to work mandatory overtime and stuff like that, it was harder to take time off because we were starting so far below. And I'm sorry, the second question.
Oh, it was about if there's an impact, or are you seeing a significant impact on public safety?
I don't think so. I mean, we sit through the ComStat meetings, or we go to the ComStat meetings every other week. I think that the numbers that I see is crime is trending down, so it's not like because of the staffing levels, crime's skyrocketing, but I mean, summer months are also coming up, and that's usually when we get busier with crimes, so we'll see what happens in the summer.
All for you. Yeah. All right. On my right, anything from you, Councilmember Bowler? Anything from you, Councilmember Daysock?
More of a question for our interim Human Resources Director. So there, in the presentation, there are roughly 22 vacant positions within, in the past year, within the police department. So in the last budget workshop, we are contemplating reducing the budget authority from 88 sworn officer positions to 72 sworn officer positions for a reduction of 16 sworn officer positions. Do you know of the 22 vacant positions, how many of them are the, would be the 16, how much of the 16 would be within the 22?
Oh, that's a good question. I mean, that number is specific to APOA. Our sergeant classifications are fully-staffed, so it would be completely police officer classifications, if I'm understanding your question correctly.
Yeah, okay. So, so in a way then, it's like saying that the 22 vacant positions, by virtue of the workshop decision of reducing the police by 16, all things being equal, then the vacant positions, conceivably could be six.
Yes, I think using, yes, using that theory, sure. I mean, the vacancies, I mean, we're allocated a certain amount, correct? So the vacancies would still exist, so this time next year, whatever the vacancies are there, you know, even if we do delay hiring after a certain amount, that vacancy will still exist and reflect.
But my point is not to celebrate the fact, but to point out the fact that the reduction in vacancies comes at the high cost of reductions in positions, because ultimately, you need to have positions that warm-blooded men and women fill.
Correct.
So if the positions are gone, then those vacancies will never get filled because they're gone, the positions are gone.
I guess I'm.
Philosophical question.
I know.
Mathematical question.
I mean, I guess, yeah, I guess in my sense, I'm not seeing those as eliminated positions, that those are positions that are still there, however they are vacant, but I understand the point that you're making with the cap and reducing that 22 even further.
I'm sorry, continue. Okay, I would just like, just for the sake of the public who might be watching and trying to follow along, is there is, could we just hear from staff about the implications, maybe city manager of, you know, if this were a perfect world and we had unlimited funds, we would certainly do more, but city manager, Jenaut, do you want to just talk about on these positions, what's one of our limiting factors?
Yeah, sure, absolutely. I think, first I want to say is that we are still, we have a number of people that we are still actively hiring, so the, I want to be clear, as you heard, we are seeing double-digit reductions in crime with the current staffing, and then, and we are still proposing to add staff from that, from the number we have today to get up to 72 officers. I agree that I think I would like to, I wish, like you said, in an ideal world, we would continue to hire as quickly as we can and try to get up to the fully-staffed 88 officers. And what's happening now is what we are seeing with some, with reductions in revenues and increases in costs that right now, given the economic situation, we, our revenues don't fully cover our operating expenses, and we've had to use some of our excess fund balance to cover, to cover that deficit, and so we recommend it as part of the budget work session to essentially pause. We don't, we'd like to continue hiring as soon as we feel like the money is coming back, but because of those budget constraints right now, we really want to focus on our existing employees, making sure we're not impacting them, that we're able to bring existing employees up to market, and so that we aren't able to, right now, afford to pay for the fully 88 officers, and so we're kind of pausing at 72 right now as part of the budget process.
Did we lose some grant funding or not have some grant funding renewed, maybe safer grant?
The safer grant was several years ago, is my understanding, and that went away. There was money from the federal government during COVID that helped us cover some program costs, and that's gone away, and so we are seeing, you know, the increased costs as well as decreases in revenues, and those trends right now during this uncertain time has created a situation where my recommendation, I think the council's direction, is to essentially pause hiring on new officers and so that we can really take care of our existing staff and continue our service levels at the levels that they are now.
Well, I think we're operating in a very cautious manner, and, you know, we can always make changes if the financial outlook changes. I know for the state of California, the residents of Los Angeles County were given an extension to file their income tax until, I want to say it's October, maybe the end of October because of the fires they experienced. There's a lot of people in Los Angeles County, and that will have some impact on the state budget. I don't know if it'll be good or not, but we didn't get the full picture when the May revise came in, because normally, by that time in May, income tax returns have come in, and the government, state government knows what they have, but yes. Okay, thank you for those clarifications. I had a question, Sergeant Horikoshi, and you can feel free, if you want to tell me, you'd rather just take this offline, to discuss it, but you were talking about the reasons for people leaving, and you had your different points, and one of them had to do with, I think you said there will always be those who don't agree with work restrictions. Can you help me understand what that means, but if you'd rather take it offline, I'm happy to do that, too, so.
Sure, let me.
Sure, take it offline.
No, I think it's kind of one of these things where we've, we don't always agree with our boss or the decisions that are made. Not saying that that employee is right or the boss is right, but differences in opinions, and that's kind of what I think it comes down to with, again, your work restrictions, meaning like what I can and can't do while I'm working patrol, or while I'm working. And, you know, like I said, we're always going to have that difference of opinion, and some people take that so strongly that they decide that this isn't the place for them. Other people feel like that's not the fight to have, and I'm happy here. So I don't know if that answers your question, but that's kind of where I was going.
You answered it well enough. Okay, thank you so much for that. Anything else from anyone? Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you. Madam Mayor, I have a question for the interim HR director. In your, in your presentation, you pointed out that there were 695 applicants in 2024, and also that there were bimonthly recruitment efforts, but, and so in 2024, 15 officers were hired, and I just, that's about 2%. So I'm just, if people are applying, it would seem that they are interested in being hired, but why would you, what would be your concerns about the, why is that so low? Why is it only 2%?
Yeah, it's, so the 695 are applications received. It doesn't necessarily mean that these candidates are passing the oral boards, so to give you, to give you a bit of a perspective, right, we receive quite a few applications per month, and we do our bimonthly interviews between 10 to 13 candidates. On average, of those 10 to 13, five may be passing. And from those five, they're placed on an eligible list, and we provide them what's called a personal history form for them to complete. Of those five, we may get three back. Once we enter those three into backgrounds, we may get one or two that actually pass background and are entered into the academy. So while we do receive a very large pool of applications, it does get whittled down at each step of the process, and then even just going through backgrounds, those candidates may not pass from there. So it does cause our rate of success, or maybe rate of getting to academy and successfully passing, it's smaller, but the flip side of it is that with the volume of applications we have, and it has been a significant increase since we implemented the 75,000, in fact, in over 50%, where originally we're receiving around 200 a year, now to receive close to 700. It also has allowed us to be okay with narrowing down our pool and selecting the most highly-qualified candidates. But yes, there are some hurdles that we face through backgrounds, getting the return of the personal history form, and making sure that those candidates successfully complete required steps.
So that's really helpful, because I, you know, we are, we are working, as you point out, and as the presentation shows, too, that those numbers are high, so we are working towards fulfilling the requirements and towards hiring more officers, but unfortunately, that is for, there are challenges. But unfortunately, that is for, there are challenges and barriers, as this report demonstrates, and as your comments demonstrate, there are barriers once even the application is received and the interview is completed.
Correct, yeah. And even to maybe take it a step back either, even further, of those 695, I referenced the Pellet B, the post-entry law enforcement test battery. We can't even move a candidate forward until that test is taken and completed. And so that can kind of be another area where we have candidates that don't ever test, right, and don't ever move forward in the process. Or perhaps they test, but they don't receive a high enough score. And that's one of the reasons, too, why we implemented or had previously done these assessment centers, was to eliminate the barrier of cost, right? And to complete everything within one day instead of having this piecemeal process. An assessment center is a heavy lift on staff, it's a whole-day event. But it is, it was one of the ways that we looked to tackle one of those challenges, of how do we move these candidates through, reduce that cost for them, and complete all steps within one day so that we can get them to where they need to be.
Well, thank you for that information. And so in your presentation as well, you mentioned that the overall for the city is 84 days to fill.
Yes, correct.
For all positions, but that is not true for APOA, as I-
It is not, no. It is a longer process simply because of backgrounds. I mean, backgrounds can take a significant amount of time. It's a pretty intensive process of reviewing the personal history form, engaging in that background process, which has a variety of different elements, such as psychological and medical examinations. Whereas with our general city staff, we're not having that level of background completed, right? The 84 days is, we have the requisition in place, we open the recruitment, we complete that competitive recruitment, we place them on the eligible list, and we refer them to the hiring manager for selection.
Thank you.
Okay, anything further? I want to thank our interim HR director, Noel White, and also Sergeant Horikoshi for their informative remarks. Thank you so much. And this is an informational report, so we accept the report. And I don't think that requires a motion, does it, Madam Clerk?
I think you do.
Do we make a motion?
One emotion to accept, yeah.
I wanted to have a little discussion, if that's all right.
Sure, on receiving the informational report on the status, sure.
Thank you. Because I, this is great information, and especially with regard to APOA, I think, and with regard to our police force, this is information that is helpful to know where the openings are, where we need more officers, to also know, to understand better how our budgeted number of officers, which was 88, and which we discussed extensively earlier this month, and discussed having a number of 72, I believe was our direction to the city manager with regard to the budget numbers. So this is really helpful to see what the challenges are for staffing, but also why we're not able to staff. Despite having 650 or 695 applicants a year, we're not able to get, and despite having a $75,000 hiring incentive, you would think that we would just be getting great applicants every single day, and we would be able to hire up to the amount. And we would, so I want to just point out and appreciate Sergeant Horikoshi as well, because these, the other information that I'm finding really relevant and finding something that I want to consider further is retention. And I know that there are, some of this is intuitive. You know, if you live 200 miles away, it's probably harder to, you probably want to find a position closer to your home, or if the cost of living here is higher, et cetera. But there are things that we can do, and hopefully that we are looking at, to improve retention of our officers. And, but also, the other thing I want to consider and suggest as the department moves forward, and we look at also where those sworn officers are and with regard to retention and with regard to the number of sworn officers that we have now, the number that we will hopefully get to in patrol, which is 72, well, 72 sworn officers, for what we look at, how to effectively deploy those officers, most effectively, in terms of retention, in terms of ensuring that the officers are able to receive the training and receive the support that they need in order to advance and to be, want to stay in Alameda and stay on our force, as well as, as we heard earlier, to reduce burnout, to reduce overtime, to reduce, you know, the challenges that all officers face with regard to the hard work that they do. But, so what I'd like to ask, I mean, just to think in the future for the city manager and for Alameda Police Leadership, is to look maybe with, get an outside support consultant or something, to look at how departments are deployed, how officers are deployed. What, I'm concerned, and Sergeant Horikoshi knows this very well, I'm concerned that we don't have, not even one officer in traffic enforcement. That's, that's something that historically we have had very robust traffic enforcement. And I am not a criminologist, but I suspect that when people feel that they are going to be scrutinized for poor driving or illegal driving, they might not be so likely to do other things that could be illegal. So that's one thing, as well as investigations. Having a caseload of 200 cases to be investigating for one officer seems like it could be very stressful, and it could definitely reduce the number of crimes that are resolved in a certain period of time. So I just want to really take a deeper dive and think about how the department and these officers, especially in APOA, are deployed, and how we can best support retention and reduce crime, which is being reduced, and I appreciate that. So thank you, those are my comments.
Thank you. You know, I just want to clarify, so we, of course, are the city council, and we don't direct the police chief, but of course, the city manager does. So city manager, I mean, you heard that. I, and I appreciate Councilmember Jensen's wanting an outside consultant. I'm not sure I agree with that. I think we have a lot of things going on at the police department, including very data-driven policing. So I, but again, that's kind of outside our purview, as, and I know that the city manager takes all those things into consideration. So, and I just want clarification, maybe from either of our APD folks in the room. I don't think that we don't have anyone doing traffic enforcement. I think we're taking from other, or using overtime or something. Is that Captain Kobayama or maybe Captain, or both of you? I don't care, but it's, it's not, I'm hoping I didn't understand that correctly. We're doing traffic enforcement, are we not?
We are doing traffic enforcement, we are writing traffic citations. Beginning of this year, our traffic citation numbers have actually increased from last year. The point I was trying to make was, and I guess similar to what Councilmember Jensen is saying, you know, when I started here, there was six officers in traffic whose sole job was to write traffic tickets and investigate traffic collisions. Now we're mostly reliant on either overtime from a patrol officer or during the course of the patrol officer's day, they are writing the traffic citation. So that's where the bulk of our traffic citations are coming from today.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah, I do have the chart. So with, that the chief helped me prepare before, with 72 officers, we would have four dedicated traffic officers and then six in investigation slash community resources. So when we get to that 72, we will have dedicated traffic enforcement.
I want to appreciate, Madam Mayor, your comments as well. And I didn't, I actually will, you know, I don't want to apologize, but actually I didn't mean to suggest, and I shouldn't suggest, that there should be staffing anywhere. And I'm responding to the information that was provided. And my, I guess where I'm going with this is that I would wonder if, as we get this information, as we know that we're not going to be able to immediately staff up to 88 for all the reasons that we've heard tonight, think, I just would like to know myself how deployment works and whether the actual having community services and traffic and investigations and training, you know, where, whether that's the ideal, that's how it works in these departments. And that's what I just wasn't really understanding, so thank you for-
You know, Councilmember Jensen, I think we're actually saying the same thing. I think we agree, we don't want our officers to be burned out, we want them to stay. We have amazing officers, we don't want you to leave, please don't leave. But we have some realities we work with. At the same time, I want to give our police chief, Nishant Joshi, a lot of credit. In the years he's been here, he has been a very innovative, forward-thinking, progressive chief. Does that mean he's got a, you know, a lot of balls up in the air and he's, I mean, yes, he does. But he, before we look to call in consultants, I would like to maybe hear from him more about, you know, where he's headed, what the next thing is. I think that there's great leadership, as you can see with Sergeant Horikoshi and Captain Kobayama, who held that position at one time. And I think there's good communication with the chief. So I think I'd like all those bright minds to work together. Maybe they can report back to us or through the city manager. We can have some sort of a report. But I know everyone's looking to solve this, and one of the things, I was just making a note of, some items to note when we do our council communications. I think a number of us were at the recent police graduations. So, you know, we do have folks coming through the pipeline. It's just that, you know, sometimes it does feel a little like stringing beads without a knot at the end, because you're adding one and then they're dropping off. But I, I think we've got a lot of collective wisdom, knowledge, and willingness to try innovative things, and sometimes you do have to do more with less. But we'll learn from, you know, all these different points of information. Councilmember Desog.
Thank you, just quickly, you know, the points I want to underscore that Sergeant Horikoshi mentioned as leading to why we lose people. There are several points, but some of the points I want to point out, I think he said, the lack of career growth and development, and related to that, fewer opportunities other than patrol. And another related one, people want different assignments. And I think in a pool where the number of budgeted authorized positions lessens from 88 to, say, 72, that makes those issues that much more pronounced. Because when there's even fewer positions than the career growth development questions or the fewer opportunities other than patrol, or, you know, people want different assignments, becomes more pronounced. I hear, you know, what the city manager is saying with regard to the budget. But, you know, the thing, that, two points. One is, like I said in our workshop, you know, at the lowest point of the Great Recession in 2011, we had to make the decision of cutting budget authorized positions for our sworn positions from 92 to 88. And that was at the lowest point of the Great Recession in, well, the lowest point was December 2010, but we made that decision six months later in June 2011. So to me, it just seems odd that at the lowest point of global economic difficulty, and not just in the United States, we had to cut our budget authorized positions by four sworn officers. And yet here we are, it is granted a difficult economic times with some uncertainty regarding, you know, the tariffs that are coming down the pike. But no one in their mind says that the magnitude of economic difficulty comes anywhere near to what happened in 2009, 2010, and 2011. So to me, to see this, the cuts in positions that we are contemplating, that we discuss at the workshop, just seems just out of proportion. So, which leads me to the second point, is I think ultimately, whether we can ever ramp up from 72 back to 88 really is going to come down to numbers that we really didn't see in our two workshops. And those numbers really come down to what are the total departmental budgets for police, for public works, whatever. We need to know what the total departmental budgets are, because it's completely possible that in reducing the sworn officers from 88 to 72, what we're really doing is reprogramming dollars that would have been in the police department, reprogramming it to other departments. And until we see the final numbers, you know, where, that is a possibility, that might be on the table. And the problem with reprogramming dollars is that, well, you're not, you're never, once you, once the dollars are reprogrammed out of police into, say, some other department, it'll be hard pressed to get, to re-reprogram that back to police. So that's why it's not a simple task of, oh, yeah, you know, we, at some point, someday, we're going to go back up to 88. It's not that, it's not that simple. And so that's why I think if we're going to make that decision to go from 88 to 72 sworn officers, that's a conversation that we really have to have that is separate and individual from everything else, because we have to understand, you know, what are the, you know, the various shifts implications, what are the implications with regard to burnout, et cetera? So, but on a final note, I do want to say that our police chief, you know, even with, you know, the limited number of men and women, 47, I think, officers on the street, 44 or 47 officers on the street, even with the limited number, you know, they keep Alameda safe. But it's coming at a cost, though, and that cost is already bearing out in the turnovers that we've been experiencing. And if we, if we go to 72 sworn officers as our, you know, budget authorized positions, then I think we're basically cementing ourselves in a state of constant wearing out of our force. So, thank you.
Councilmember Desog, I'm trying to follow your line of reasoning there. Can you give me some specific examples of where we're reprogramming dollars from the police budget to other departments?
No, that's what I said, in our, in our two workshops, you didn't have the final numbers of the departments in none of the, none of the things. And so that's, that's what I said, we need to see what the final numbers are.
Well, you made this statement, if I captured it correctly, that it's completely possible that by reducing the number of sworn officers, we're just reprogramming dollars to other departments.
Exactly, that's what I said.
What was the basis of that assertion?
That is a-
Or was it speculation?
That is a hypothetical. It is, it is subject to, I need to see the dollars. I mean, we, it was not, it was not part of your department, your packets in the two workshops, right?
Is it fair to say you were just speculating when you said that?
Well, the money has to go somewhere. We know what the, we know what the current budget of the police force is. The current authorized budget is roughly $49 million. So, you know, if you're going to cut, and that $49 million is for 88 officers, along with, I think, 25 additional non-sworn officers, I think for a total of 125 positions. So we know that the $49 million is for 125 positions, of which 88 are sworn officers. So then what is going to be, when you cut back down to 72 sworn officers, what's going to be the departmental change?
Okay, so it was a hypothetical, not based on anything specific that you'd seen, but you want to see more?
No, it is, it's based upon, it's based upon my understanding of what the previous budget is, and it's based upon my saying that there is a lack of departmental information on paper. So, and one can, you know, easily do the math of where, what's going to be the ultimate budget? And if the money is then given to other departments, and if you see rise in other departments' budget, then the math says that the budget was reprogrammed.
Okay, but at that, at this point, we haven't seen that math.
We haven't seen that, you haven't seen the departmental numbers like we have frankly in the past.
Thanks. Councilmember Bowler, I think I say your hand up.
Thank you so much. I just want to thank staff for that great report, and thank you so much, Sergeant, too, for just being here tonight to give a, kind of an inside perspective on how the officers are feeling and this big issue of retention. I just kind of want to step back and kind of think about the big picture, because this needs to be, and it already has been put into context to some degree by my colleagues. needs to be, and it already has been put into context to some degree by my colleagues. And, you know, Councilmember Desog's concern for this is, is in a general sense, shared by, I think, every council member here. What I observed coming into this process is that the city presented us with a, with budget through a series of workshops that wasn't about cutting anything. It was actually about expanding police services from where we are. And at the time of the first proposal was for 70 officers instead of our current number in expansion. Because of council feedback, we pushed that to 72, and that became the new staff recommended budget, which I think there's largely great consensus for based on the comments at our past budget workshop. And it's important to note that where there were enhancements in the other departments that were made, it was very clear that staff was limiting those to areas where there was a public safety issue or maybe health and safety issue, things that were absolutely essential. You don't see departments growing in other areas to any large degree. So you really got a sense that through the process, and there were multiple council members who were asking a lot of questions in the background. I was one of them. We're trying to look for exactly what staff did a lot of great work on, which was trying to uncover rocks, figure out, you know, are there ways to pay for more officers? Are there ways to come up with more savings? I mean, you have to really commend the city staff, the city manager and her staff for really coming up with some creative solutions to the budgeting this year. I mean, we are talking about going into our excess reserves, our residual reserves by about half over the course of two years, which is pretty substantial. To do more would probably not be considered fiscally appropriate, given the economic uncertainty that we do face. But what you see is a very much a consensus on this council that we do put the police department and its staffing, its future staffing to get to that number of 88 at a very high priority. And we're really making sure that that infrastructure is there. You will see, and there's a budget item that talks about enhancements to employee compensation and whatnot. So ultimately, it's no secret, and in the budget, the city manager very much emphasized retention. And that was one of the things that you heard too from our, some of the presentation tonight. So we are completely in agreement with Sergeant's concerns about the retention issues. We are, I'm completely in agreement with the mayor in that the police chief has done some really effective programming over the last years in terms of doing enhancements with technology, with data-based and evidence-based decisions, with geographic considerations, and getting creative about bringing the police department up to like state-of-the-art practices, which probably accounts for the fact that we've seen, you know, even greater reductions in crime than other communities. You know, what the city manager had talked about with double-digit crime reductions. That's pretty impressive. So I really want to just emphasize that we completely feel for our sworn officers and, you know, we, we love the fact that so many of them are so talented. We have this really diverse group. They're coming to these new graduation ceremonies. We have several officers that are in the wings. When we heard from the police chief during the budget session, it sounded very likely that we'll get to 72 rather quickly, and we will have some of these positions in investigations with, you know, perhaps six detectives online and having a couple officers also doing traffic enforcement exclusively. So I think that there's, not only is there a real concerted effort on part of the city but, and this council, but also I think there is some real optimism for where we're headed for the police department and for the, ultimately to not only get this recruitment phase passed where we're being more effective, which we've made huge strides on, but also the retention side. I am optimistic.
Thank you, Councilmember Bowler. Anything further before we have a motion, Vice Mayor Prior?
I don't really have much to add. All of you have done such a wonderful job, so thank you. But I just want to say, though we've experienced double-digit reductions in crime, I do appreciate the commitment to retaining and recruiting new officers by staff and this council, because we don't want to essentially punish the police department for doing a really great job. So I just want to say that I appreciate all the comments and all the hard work everyone's done.
Thank you so much. So we've had lots of feedback, lots of inputs. So what I need is a motion to accept this informational report with all the, the council feedback that we've had. And that's removed by Councilmember Bowler, seconded by Councilmember Desog. That's the way around. That's the way around. Motion by Desog, seconded by Bowler. Anything further seeing, I'm sorry, yes?
Do you have any public comment?
We did not.
We did not. Oh, did I? Thank you.
But we had none, so we're good.
Okay, thank you. Gosh, I haven't been doing this job very long that I forgot public comment. Okay, so all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
And there were no abstentions or oppositions. So thank you so much. Thank you to everyone who presented. Thank you, staff and council. And so with that, my goodness, we come to item eight, city manager communications. City Manager General.
Thank you so much. I do, I do have a number of comments, so bear with me. But in terms of events, on May 28th, the Alameda Sister City Association is holding a community meeting at Mastick Senior Center to answer questions and receive feedback about the Sister City proposal with the village of Wadi Fakin. On May 31st, Pacific Fusion is hosting a fun morning for residents of all ages at the REEP Climate Center programs. We have Alameda's award-winning water shuttle that's celebrating its first birthday in July with the great news that starting this summer, we'll be extending our hours and adding a sixth day of service, so operating Tuesday through Sunday. And the shuttle has been awarded funding to continue for the next two years. Thank you, in part to our mayor.
$737,000.
County Transportation Commission. So thank you very much. The Alameda Free Library is kicking off its summer reading program on June 1st for ages zero to 100 plus. And check, so check out their website for more details and then sign up to track your reading online and earn prizes. And then local updates, last week, the city started construction on the first phase of Grand Street from Shoreline to Otis, so please use caution when driving in this area. When completed in August, there will be a two-lane bikeway, 88 curb ramps and parking, and a mid-block crosswalk near Wood School with a pedestrian island. And then lastly, the city will be launching mobile parking payments this summer. In the meantime, we've installed payment stations at the Harbor Bay Ferry Terminal and replaced the broken stations on Park Street. So these will be turned off until mobile payment is in place, but remember parking time limits on Park Street still apply. Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you. Okay. And then we go to oral communication. And since you have to be in person, and I'm guessing that the three folks in the chambers can speak any other time, we will move on from that. No council referrals, so let's just go to council communications. Let's start on my right, Councilmember Desog. What have you got?
Along with everyone else, I attended a number of events, so I'm not going to say them all because, you know, everyone wants to say what they attended. But it was a pleasure attending the Alameda Girls and Boys Clubs 75th Gala. And there were three or four others that I attended, but I'm not going to say them because I believe we all attended them.
Okay. Councilmember Bowler.
Yes, there was a few things, I would say, including, yes, the, I think the Boys and Girls Club was, was that in the?
It was before.
Yeah, I think that was three weeks ago.
Oh, okay.
But that was a great event. It was good to bring it up again.
Okay, well, then I attended the Alameda, new, four new police hires. How's that?
Graduation? Yes.
The mayor's conference that was at Weta and with, with the mayor's giving a nice presentation, there was, that was on May 14. And we also, I also attended the community meeting for a potential surf park that was for Alameda Point on May 17. I was at the Temple of Israel's 105th anniversary celebration on the 17th as well. On the 18th, the Alameda Point Collaborative's Farm-to-Table Lunch, and also the Asian Pacific Islander Cultural Festival at Alameda Point, which was brought back after, I think, a 13-year hiatus. And it was terrific to be there with Councilmember Desog and I think everyone except the mayor, but I know she was somewhere else.
The mayor's at walk for hearing. She needs a clone, but.
Yeah. So anyway, that was, that was terrific to see that event and the diversity of sort of art, performing art, some of the food and some of the activities that were there for families. And I think that is, would be enough, except that I also was at the class meeting last night, which was, you know, dealing with airport noise.
Good for you. Vice Mayor Prior.
I also was at the mayor conference, and I just want to say, I was once again so amazed by the city of Alameda. I was like, ooh, I want to live there. It was, it was great. And the video, everything was lovely. It was, I thought it was spectacular. Yes, I was also at the API Festival. That is, I can't wait for it to come back next year. That was great. And also at the Alameda Point Collaborative Lunch. So that was it.
Councilmember Jensen.
I'm just going to expand on some of these because I was at most of those. I want to thank the mayor and also the APD swearing in, which was, it's always good, anytime that we're bringing new officers in and promoting other staff within the Alameda Police Department. Thank you to the mayor and staff, Sarah, Sarah Henry, who is here for hosting a terrific Alameda County Mayor's Conference at the Water Emergency Taxi Transportation Authority. That was a really, really fun night with great food.
And on the ferry.
I'm sorry?
Well, we were at the Weta offices, but then we were on the ferry.
Right, and then on the ferry. It was really, I think that the mayors are very impressed and all the staff from other cities definitely impressed. Also, the Building Futures Jazz It Up Recognizing, that was an event at Yoshiz a few days ago. And it was great to see the recognition for our mayor, for her support for domestic violence and other vulnerable Alameda residents, support from, from Assemblymember Bonta and Supervisor Tam. Finally, the Alameda Point Collaborative Farm-to-Table Luncheon, always really enjoyable. It was a beautiful day. The food was terrific and tremendous. And I just want to point out that I was glad and happy to be there to see Alameda Point Collaborative recognize the partnership between the collaborative and Stop Waste for the gardens as well as for the compost program there. And I serve on the board of Stop Waste, so I was glad to be there to see the award and recognition for Executive Director of Stop Waste, Timothy Burrows. And finally, last night, it was a long week. Last night I was at the Friends of the Park Foundation Golf Tournament and Dinner, which was, which was a really nice event at the Lincoln Park. And thanks to, to Justin Long and to all the volunteers from the parks and Friends of the Park for all they do to improve our community spaces here in Alameda.
Thanks, Councilmember Jensen. Yeah, the last week was a long week. Well, and this week is too. So on Friday, May 9th, I gave opening remarks at the In Plain Site Climate Photography Display, which is, I think, is it still going on on the radium runway? It's, and that's, it's definitely worth your time to go out there and see. There's some pretty amazing photography, and not just from local artists, but from around the region and actually out of the country. And then Tuesday, May 13th, yes, a number of us attended the APD Swearing In, which always gives me hope. And I'm so impressed with the officers that have been hired. They all speak different languages. They all had college degrees and, and other, you know, business owners. And it just, it was impressive. And yes, Wednesday, May 14th, Alameda hosted the Alameda County Mayor's Conference, Sarah Henry, it wouldn't happen without you. But everybody had a great time. The city manager and I got lots of nice messages afterwards. And the mayor of Albany, who's hosting next month, is already stressing that what are we going to do to top this? We love Albany. Then Thursday night, yes, I was very honored to receive the, the award from Building Futures because they're such an important organization that we are so blessed to have work in our community with domestic violence victims and survivors. So, and then Friday, May 16th, I'd been wanting to get to the newly renovated Islamic Center that's there in the corner of San Leclerc and 8th Street. So I went for Friday prayers this past Friday. And, you know, there were more than 100 people there for Friday prayers, and I was just so surprised. And a number of people that, you know, have spoken to us in this, in these chambers, and I was very warmly greeted. Saturday, yeah, I rode my bike out on a very windy day to the surf park. But that's a pretty exciting potential project. And then, as Councilmember Bowler noted, the two of us attended Temple Israel's was centennial plus five anniversary because they couldn't celebrate their 100th anniversary when it happened because five years ago, we were in a pandemic and they couldn't have a big gathering. So Councilmember Bowler and I presented the proclamation that we had done for Jewish Heritage, Jewish American Heritage Month to the board president. Sunday morning, I opened the walk for hearing at, which was, took place on the, on the beach. We started at Crown Memorial and then, or Crab Cove, and then they, the walk went down the beach going toward Bay Farm Island. I did not walk with them because I needed to go back home and get ready for the ABC Farm-to-Table Luncheon. And that was, as everyone noted, beautifully done, beautiful weather, not windy. And, I mean, I was honored to receive an award for Alameda Point Collaborative for being, I think it was Housing Hero. But it's just always a really nice event and nice to see so many of us there. So then we come to adjournment. And this evening, I'm going to adjourn tonight's meeting in memory of Janet Kern. And some of us worked with Janet Kern, who was our city attorney from January 2012 through December of 2018. She moved to Alameda, lived here while she was working here, and then when she left Alameda, she relocated to Arizona. But sadly, she passed away earlier this month. So if we could just take a moment of silence, she was a very dedicated public service servant So thank you, everyone, for your, your regards for our former city attorney Janet Kern. And with that, this council meeting is adjourned. Thank you all, staff, council members, for your time. Good work.